Hi Barbara, how are you?
I am well.
Good.
Michelle.
Yeah.
Yes, good. So how are you? Cold?
Cold, yeah, it's a cold day.
I, you know, I think we got, make my screen a little bit way. We got spoiled because for the past couple of years, we've had kind of nothing burger winters.
Right.
With almost no snow.
Yeah.
Cool days. I mean, nothing really. And now, this winter is seriously and dragging on.
Yeah, it's cold.
I know, I know. It's supposed to go up, what, into the 40s tomorrow?
I think so.
High 40s, I think.
Yeah. Hey Gina.
Hi. I panicked because we had, there was an overlapping meeting scheduled.
Yeah, I saw that.
But it ended up being okay.
Yeah, just, if you just, it came in just perfectly. Hi Gina.
Yeah.
Hi Tony.
Hi Barbara. Little excitement at the end of the day or the beginning of the day depending upon your perspective.
Yep. I'm just trying to do the agenda here.
Oh, and Tony and Gina. Deborah and I would like to schedule, if it's just the two of you and the two of us and Kevin, that's not a quorum for a public meeting, so we don't have to post it. But we'd like to schedule a meeting so we can, you know, you can tell us about the budget and what's up and, you know, then we go back to FinCom and relay any special issues. So I know you're not done with the budget yet because of, right? Correct, Tony?
Well, what happens is, we're gonna have the hearing of, and I'm gonna present the PowerPoint and the budget. And then the school committee at the regular meeting after this meeting at approximately seven o'clock, one of the agenda items is the budget. If the chair and the members of the school committee choose to approve it, then it becomes the budget. It ceases being the superintendent's budget and becomes the school committee's budget. And then that can go to the finance committee.
Yeah, us, right.
Yep.
Now here's Deborah. So, do, isn't that executive session for that part though?
No.
No, so we would stay, we can stay for that tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, but at some point, I remember last year, it'd been, you gave us a, just the four of us, it would be, I guess, a kind of private PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll schedule that at a time that's at your convenience.
Absolutely. It's totally up to you and Deborah. The, the reality is, the PowerPoint I showed tonight is, unless the school committee alters the budget, is going to be what I would show you. But I mean, you know, all I do is change the title page.
Well, anyway, just, we just, it's important for us to have a chance to meet with you as a small, you know.
Absolutely. Oh yeah. And then I'm always available to meet with the full committee if, if the committee so chooses.
We're the liaisons, so we would meet with you and then we can see what happens next. I don't want to hold up the meeting.
Just, I think we're just, uh, Lauren is logging on in just a minute, right now. So we'll wait for her to join and then we can get started.
Are you still, are you still at work or is that your background?
Oh, you know what, that's a good point. I should change that. I'm not at work, I'm at home.
It's okay, it's very impressive.
Very.
There we go. This is my real background.
Okay Gina, you have to turn the meeting over to Janice.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, that's my wife. She's letting me use my, her laptop, so thank you. Wallwood here.
Alright. And I think that we have to, just before we get started, we'll call, call the meeting to order. So I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:34, the budget hearing for 2022 to 2023.
Sorry Gina, is this a separate meeting from our regular meeting in separate minutes?
I think so, yes.
Yes, it is Michelle. This, this is a public hearing. There, there should be a document like this in your inbox.
Sorry.
But you don't have to detail all the information.
No.
It's just a summary that it's a, you know, budget hearing.
Yeah, what I, what I recommend, Michelle, to make it simple for you is once I, once the meeting starts, you just attach the budget and the PowerPoint presentation. You know, electronically link them.
Okay. I can do that easy.
And then just for a point of order, do we say the Pledge of Allegiance now or before the regular meeting? Do you say the Pledge of Allegiance before a public hearing as well?
Yes, you do.
Okay, alright. If everybody could please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have to say, that'll sound so much better when we're all together. And then do we say it again before the school committee meeting?
Yes, we do.
Because we're calling a new meeting to order. Okay, alright. Alright, um, Mr. Andrews, you should have host capability now, so if you'd like to share your screen.
I'd be happy to Madam Chair and Superintendent Parentozzi. I'm noticing that because it was a scanned document, it's sideways and I'm not able to rotate it in the current format.
It wasn't sideways this afternoon when we practiced.
Right, because it was stored on your computer. And I'm looking at a scanned paper document, which I think I can edit, but I'm not quite sure.
Mr. Parentozzi, if it's on your computer, do you want to share your screen? We have the, we have the document, but I can't, mine's not in PowerPoint format, otherwise I'd do it myself. If you have it in PowerPoint document or, um...
I think, I believe I'm looking at a scanned PDF right now.
Yes, that's what I have also.
Is...
Okay. I now have my PowerPoint up on my screen.
Okay, I can make you host. Mr. Andrews, can you, actually, because you're host, you'll have to make Mr. Parentozzi.
I'd be happy to. Okay. Superintendent Parentozzi is now host and presenter.
This is going to be a miracle if I pull this off, you realize that?
Oh, I'm just glad we practiced it. Oh, I see it, it's happening.
So you go to the top, the slideshow at the very top.
I see, so right now I'm seeing the, the budget presentation slide on there. And we're seeing the first slide of the presentation.
And what do I want to do?
Go up to the, go up to the very top, all the different options, and it says slideshow. Keep going up, up to the very top. Yeah, and now go to the right. Go to the right, there.
Got it.
Yeah. And then from beginning, yeah.
Thank you. Good, good evening, members of the school committee and members of the FinCom. It's my great pleasure to present the superintendent's fiscal 2023 budget to you this evening during this public hearing. This public hearing has been posted for two weeks electronically on the town website and on the school district website as required by Mass General Law. And I will simply go through this if I can figure it out. There you go. The, first of all, I want to tell the members of our community how fortunate I am to work with the current Nahat School Committee. They are supportive and they are responsive to the community and of course, are very responsive to the fiscal realities that surround us during these days. And I want to personally thank all five of them for being so supportive to not only myself as superintendent, but also to the principal and all of the, the staff and of course, on behalf of the children who are doing a great job. This year's budget represents an increase of $111,394 as is traditional and as the school committee chooses. I have divided the budget into three sections. The amount of money being spent here at the Johnson School, the amount of money being spent at the district level, and then the, the amount of money being spent by the town on education. There are several factors, as you see, that lead to this increase. Perhaps the most noticeable one is the significant cost increase for all supplies and materials as we have been experiencing in our private lives. This budget includes all the salary increases. It, it involves projected increases for the collective bargaining associations because there are, at the present time, we are in negotiations with the NTA Unit A, who are the licensed educators and support personnel. And we have not even begun with the power professionals or the educational ESPs. But that should, we should have that hopefully before town meeting. But there is an amount of money projected in the budget to cover both of those negotiations. We will have two second grade sections next year due to projected enrollment. That actually isn't an increase because we will reduce our current two sections of first grade to one. It includes all the educational materials and supplies that we should need for next year. It includes a two and a half percent increase in the Swampscott tuition for our Nahat students going to the Swampscott Junior and Senior High School. It, it has some money in it for supplies to address health and safety. However, most of those, unlike last year's budget, we're confident can be taken out of the federal funds that the town and, and the district have received. It includes an increase in tuition and an increase in number in the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technology School, High School tuition. It includes special education here at the Johnson School, also out of district tuition and transportation for those students as required by law who are educated out of district. We have some student hardware replacement that we need, just as a justification for that and an explanation. Last year, we lent out a lot of hardware when we were not in person. And as you can predict, some of that hardware didn't return in the same condition it was lent and therefore, we need to replace it. We, two years ago, we replaced our security cameras, however, two of them were not replaced and they need to be replaced so that the police department can see those cameras in addition to the other 18 that we have. And we are going to be purchasing for the first time a music curriculum because Mr. Andrews has decided that since we have on an annual basis, pretty much inexperienced music teachers, that a standardized music curriculum would help immensely. So the Johnson School increases and this is those items that I just explained, but a little deeper dive include the current and budgeted staff projections for fiscal '23 and for the collective bargaining agreements, the second grade teacher and reducing the first grade teacher, which is budget neutral. Reduction in our electric cost. And I have that number for later in the, in the regular meeting. But we decreased our COAT hours by about 3,000 in the last month, per month. So that will result in a considerable savings over the cost of the year. The weather stripping hopefully will result in less gas being used because we have weather stripped all of the doors and openings in the building. It includes our educational supplies and material, building maintenance. We are getting professional development in the John Collins Writing Program, the music curriculum, we're purchasing social studies and materials and the technology replacements. So the total change in the Johnson School represents $32,949, which is 29.5% of the $111,000 total increase. The district changes are much more, much simpler. District costs would be the superintendent's office, the school committee costs, tuitions, the total change and the junior, senior high school tuition increase. So the increase at the Swampscott Junior Senior High School represents approximately 35% of the total increase. And the total change in the district represents 48% of the total increase of the $111,000, which is $53,261. The town changes are even simpler. They, they are the Essex tuition and the transportation costs. The increases in the transportation costs result in two factors. One is the contract with Healy Bus, which is a known quantity because it is a multiple year contract with an escalator. And the special education transportation cost to NRT, North Reading Transportation, which is not known because that's purchased on an as needed basis. So the budget includes an increase for those two and plus the Essex tuition of 21, 25,184, which is 22% of the total increase. Which obviously, the three levels result in 100% of the increase. So an overview, as you see here, is the Johnson School, the increase of 32,949 or 1.9% increase. The district costs an increase of 53,261 or 2.4% increase overall. And, which is a subtotal of 2.2 for net school spending. That's an important number for the town because we have a net school spending requirement which the town is meeting. We also have an increase of 6.1% in the town portion of the budget. Please note that the fiscal '22 budget is adjusted from the time it was approved by the school committee to the time the actual costs were incurred. We had one additional Essex student. So the total, the total education cost, as I said previously, is going up $111,394 and that is a 2.62% increase.
Mr. Parentozzi.
Yes.
Were you, were you meaning to advance through the slides as you're going along? Because on our screen, it's still on the original slide. So I, I was waiting to say anything because I didn't know if this was an introduction. But I think that you were, were there slides that were going along with what you were saying? We're just still on the original slide.
Okay, my slideshow's the one I'm on, so I have absolutely no idea what I'm doing wrong.
Hmm, can you, um, it's definitely on your screen. Can you exit out of what you're looking at and open it back up? Or maybe there's this, maybe there's a window that's behind the one that you're looking at? If you're, if you're advancing it, what I suspect that you're doing is that you're advancing it on your computer. You need to be advancing it in the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
So maybe close out of the one that you're on and click on the Zoom meeting. There we go, now we're on it. So go forward. See, this is what we are seeing.
There, perfect.
Education at work. I apologize, Madam Chair, I had no idea. So let me go quickly backwards. Once again, thank you to the, the school committee, did that advance? Yes, okay.
Oh, it's perfect.
So this is, this is the overall increase, 111,394 with the three subdivisions of the increase for the Johnson School, the district and the town with the factors that I explained before. I'll shut up and let everybody simply read them since you can see them now.
Is this PowerPoint going to be available somewhere where you can let us know?
It sure will. I'll be making it available online and shareable from the link from the website.
This is the Johnson School changes from fiscal '22 to fiscal '23, an increase of $32,949, which represents 29.5% of the $111,000 increase. This incre, this demonstrates both costs and efficiencies. So for example, the reduction in electric costs. So this is a net. The district changes are the superintendent's office, the school committee costs and tuitions. The largest item in this budget is the $39,198 for the increase in the tuition for our seventh through 12th grade students to the Swampscott District. That represents 35.2% of the $111,000. And this, the district changes represents 47.8% of the total increase overall.
Mr. P. I have a question about the tuition. I understand the tuition rate for Swampscott High School. How are the tuition rates determined with schools outside of Swampscott, like Essex Tech?
That's really a very complex but good question. Private providers of special education services for public school students that are paid for by public funds must go before the commissioner's analysis when they increase rates. There is a small COLA that is permitted, permitted, and then anything above that has to be approved. So the district itself has very little impact on those tuitions.
So they just set a rate that's approved and we pay it when children...
Each, each school has a different rate for a variety of reasons. It's not a universal rate.
Right.
But for example, if I'm a, a public, a private entity and I'm building a building or I have a roof problem, then they petitioned that the administration of that facility would petition the commissioner for a rate increase that's significant. Other out of district costs are borne by collaboratives and that's very controlled.
And in terms of budget, how are we projecting that, that tuition? We have a, an amount for the children that we have in town and can estimate, you know, that tuition for Swampscott. Is it just negligible? You know, that if there were several children who went to a school outside of Swampscott, how would we plan for that? Do we have that covered some way?
Once again, a very good question. I meet with a special education director and we attempt to look into the student population that we now have to identify students that may be required to go to outside placements. And I budget that possibility.
Okay.
The, if the money is not spent, it returns to the town as free cash. In my time here, we have identified those funds very closely. We've had a very good run so that on an annual basis, we have actually reduced the number of students by one or two that we have in outside placements and therefore the amount of funds we've returned to the town have been significant. This year, we have had two students who have been placed out of the district, both of them requiring transportation. In the current budget, there is enough money to cover their tuition, but I'm going to be about $20,000 short on the transportation costs. The good news is, we'll, we have plenty of money in the tuition so that when, if you remember, I asked the school committee to move money from one line item to another, we'll be able to cover it. The only other way to do it would be to to budget the line without the potential for any additional special education out of district tuition cost or transportation cost. And then go to the town every time we need more money. It was determined when I got here that that was not an efficient way of doing it. Since the money cannot be misspent in any way. It's either gonna go to tuitions or transportation or it's gonna be returned to the town. Now, the other factor that's really important for the, the community members and the school committee to understand is that the administration has no impact on the decision where those children go to school. That's all determined by the individual education plan team. And it's actually an ethics violation if I get involved. So my job is to provide the appropriate placement costs, but not the appropriate placement.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Great questions. And then, as I said before, $25,184 or 22% of the total increase. And then, as I said before, $25,184 were 22% of the total increase for transportation costs and Essex tuition increase. So this gives you a snapshot of this year versus, uh, excuse me, this current year versus the budget for next year. And this just puts in one nice little graph everything I basically have said at the, at the district level and at the Johnson School, the district and the town level. Uh, the one thing I was pointing out was the town money in 2022 was adjusted. Uh, the town accountant does that. The budget is obviously a projection. Uh, we, Essex, for example, can take one more or one fewer number of students than we project. Uh, we're usually pretty, pretty close. If, uh, if we missed by 10 students, we would definitely have to go back to the FinCom, but that has not happened, we've been, uh, we've been fortunate in that regard. And then this slide is one I'm particularly fond of showing. This shows, um, the voted 2019 budget through the current, uh, my current budget shows you the increases from 20, 21, 22, 23 in percentages and raw numbers, and shows 19, 20, and 21 in raw numbers. Um, and I apologize for that last column, that wasn't that way when we looked at it last time. Um, so those, those dangling digits belong in the, the, uh, the line above it. So as you see, in five years, we've been averaging about a 2.64% increase, and this covers everything as I have previously indicated. Um, and that's a lot of numbers. And that's it. Now, if members of the school committee or the, or the community have, uh, more specific questions, I also can pull up the line item budget.
Mr. Parentazzi, that was a great presentation, it made a lot of sense to me. It's consistent with what we've been aware of throughout the year, and thank you so much for presenting it in such a thoughtful manner, easy to understand, in my opinion, thank you.
Thank you.
I think the fact that the Johnson School budget has been so modestly increasing is a testament to your financial stewardship too, um, and really appreciate it.
Yeah, there have been a variety of factors that have been able to keep the, uh, fund requirements and increases down. Um, obviously efficiencies, you know, making sure we, we analyze every expenditure in an appropriate manner. We've had some retirements, which have helped. Um, and I make sure that when we do have a retirement and there is a savings between the cost of the staff member leaving for the purpose of retirement or resignation, and the next hire, I make sure that, that breakage, is what we call it, that breakage is used to offset the increases to the town.
Mr. Parentazzi, are there any other questions from the committee or the FinCom representatives?
Um, excuse me, am I correct that, that, that we had a new and that this represents the new figure for the negotiation with Swampscott? That that was a new contract, and so this is the new set of figures for that?
Uh, Madam Chair, through you. This is the first year of the next five-year contract.
Right, right, okay.
And the percentage of increase, the negotiation team representing the school district did a phenomenal job of negotiating. The increases are 2.5% per year for each of the five years. So, uh, this was the way the FinCom asked me to do it five years ago. Uh, because previous to that, every year, the tuition cost to Swampscott was either going up or down, because Swampscott charged us by the per capita student population. So last contract, we changed that. We had a very long and drawn-out negotiations and resulted, resulted in, um, what the Swampscott, uh, FinCom and Board of Selectmen considered to be an adjustment. And now we are right where we want to be with that 2.5% increase per year, regardless of whether the student population goes up or down. Uh, the previous town administrator, um, was adamant about doing it this way, and the current town administrator, uh, is very positive about it. Uh, so that it's, and, and of course, the FinCom, uh, when I brought that concept to them, they were wholly in support of it. Because when, uh, when we project these numbers now till fiscal '27, they're, they're actually going to be real numbers.
Our, our class size does vary considerably year to year, so this really does provide us with something we can, um, plan for, you know, financially.
So that's good to hear, this is reflected now. We're doing this new kind of planning, and that seems to be, that got arranged for and is now built in until 2027.
Right.
Good.
And we're finishing negotiations for a three-year contract to, uh, both of our collective bargaining units. So that, that will be locked in, uh, for, for '23, '24, '25 also. So, uh, basically, the largest cost will be predictable.
That must be a relief to you, to be able to plan.
Yeah, my first year here, I had to negotiate Swampscott, the labor, uh, agreements, uh, both bus contracts and the food service contract. Yes, this is, this is relieving.
Good.
If there's, um, no further questions, um, I'll take a motion to adjourn the budget hearing. Oh, Michelle, you're, you're muted.
Oh, Superintendent Parentazzi, thank you, this is, I would agree with Laura. This is extremely helpful, to see it in this clear way. So it helps the FinCom as well, and we appreciate it, I want you to know that.
Kevin, don't forward this, uh, PowerPoint. I want to fix those dangling digits over here before we forward it along. And I apologize to everybody, I have absolutely no idea what happened.
Uh, Superintendent Parentazzi, that's fine, I won't. Um, I do not see the dangling, oh, I see what you're talking about, that first column.
Yeah, that, yeah, that first column, the, uh, the single digit of, of those millions of dollar numbers are all in the next line, and I had, I fixed that before, and I have no idea what happened.
It's okay, I'll, I'll just take the most recent one that you sent to me, and, um, we can talk about posting that online.
Yeah, wonderful, thank you very much for your help, and thank you, Madam Chair, for your help. I'm gonna stop my share now.
Can you also make me host again?
Uh, okay. Do I stop my share first?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
And then you, and then you hover over my square, like my, where you can see my video, and in the upper right-hand corner, there'll be three dots, you click on that.
You are now, oh my, I am learning so much. Do I want to change the host to Regina? Uh, okay.
Michelle, were you going to make a motion to adjourn the budget hearing?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the budget hearing at 7:08 PM.
Can I have a second?
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor? It's unanimous, and we will adjourn the budget, the public budget hearing. And I will move right into calling the regular school committee meeting to order for February 15th at 7:08. Um, we'll start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. As our first order of business, if somebody would like to make a motion to approve them regular meeting minutes from January 25th of '22.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, January 25th, 2022.
Can I have a second?
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Um, all in favor of approving the minutes, as written, Ms. Anderson will abstain because you were not at that meeting. Um, Ms. Dan, Ms. Karis, Ms. Sherlock, and myself, motion carries. Mr. Parentazzi, can you take us through the, um, the roll for tonight, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd love to, thank you so much. The bill rolls for this evening are, um, a total of $570,676.42. The vast percentage of it is our second of three payments to the town of Swampscott for $517,419.65. The other bills, um, obviously total around $53,000 are very typical. We have our utilities, we have supplies and materials for the building, we have tuitions for, um, our special education students and services to them, we have our food service, uh, payments. Uh, we do have our exterminator, we have, uh, as I mentioned last time, all of our inspections are done, so there's a, an elevator inspection of, and maintenance bill in here. The one thing I do want to point out to you is that our electric bill represents a 11.3% reduction from the same timeframe last year. So the, um, Green Communities funded, uh, Phase 1 of our LED project is already paying dividends. And I was told today by the town administrator that we got our Phase 2 application in, in top, in, on time. So we will be going to the Phase 2, probably not in the summer, probably very similar to, to this phase where we're gonna do it, uh, second shift and during a, a school break. But with the completion of the Phase 2, we'll have all of our lighting, uh, done, uh, with LED lighting, which will save a dramatic amount of, um, electric cost. And I'm certainly hopeful that that be the case, since I reduced the budget by $10,000 for electric cost. Um, Madam Chair, with your permission, I respectfully ask that a member of the school committee make the motion to approve the invoices on the bill roll of the 15th of February to the, to $570,676.42.
I would love to make a motion, um, to approve the bill roll dated 2/15/2022 in the amount of $570,676.42.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the roll, uh, bill roll as written, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Parentazzi. Um, we'll move on to old business, and if you could provide an update on COVID-19 and our current standing.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. The, um, current town update is that we have had 12 cases in February, which is remarkable, since in January, we had 157 cases in the hot. Uh, one student, uh, was among those 12. Uh, we had three close contacts outside of school, those contacts were of the positive student. There was one sibling, one contact that is sporting, uh, activities, and one contact from a sleepover. Uh, the, um, close contacts are without symptoms, and they are at school. And, uh, that's really it, our, um, we have 80% of our students either doing the pool testing or exempt. They would be exempt if they had COVID-19 within the last 90 days, and therefore they're not tested because their positive test would, uh, skew the results. We have 70% of our students who are either signed up for the home test or are exempt. So we have a significant number of, of students and, um, our staff also of doing the, um, the testing program that we have in place now. Uh, we are getting a new, uh, shipment of kits in. Parents and guardians will receive kits, uh, that will cover, uh, through the vacation period, and we're going to be, uh, communicating with parents via technology to ask them to make sure that every student has a, uh, takes an antigen test on the 27th of February, right before returning on the, uh, 28th. So that's the update, all good news. The, um,
Sorry to interrupt, um, I just didn't get, um, I just want to make sure I have those numbers accurate for, um, the school participation in the pool testing, so 80% pool testing, um, participation, and I, I, sorry that I lost the remaining numbers, there was a number that were exempt.
Yeah, it's a total 80% be, in the pool or exempt.
Okay.
And it's a total of 70% signed up for the at-home testing or exempt. So the, the, the negative there is the key. Only 20% of our students who can, uh, sign up for the pool testing are not signed up for it. And only 30% of our students who can be signed up for the at-home testing are not signed up for it. That's why we, we, the nurses do it that way.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the COVID update? Um, so I think the next order of business is in regards to our protocols, uh, currently. And, uh, Mr. Parentazzi, if you could, um, I don't know if you want to start by summarizing the current, um, changes from the DSE, or if you'd like me to summarize that?
Certainly. Um, I sent the members of the school committee a multi-page packet that has all the information that I could glean. Uh, first of all, uh, on our website, for all the community members, parents, guardians, and members of the residents of the town, we have a dashboard that is updated daily, that shows the incidents of COVID in the school. And this shows that, um, the positive cases, um, have been pretty much frozen for the last three weeks at about low 50s, 51, 52, 53, which is great. Um, this also demonstrates the, uh, classes that the classes that the cases have been in, and the total positive cases for the week, which, as I mentioned, are very low. So last week, the commissioner and governor were on TV, and they said very emphatically and simply that as of February twenty eighth, the mandate statewide for students and parents, guardians, staff, and visitors wearing masks in public schools will not be renewed, which means that the mask mandate in public schools will end on the twenty eighth of February. He also stated emphatically that local jurisdictions can make different decisions. They can make a decision based on their local data. The town administrator and I had a conversation, and currently, as of Friday, the requirement for masks in public buildings in the town of Nahat has ended. So it's up to the school committee to determine where we go in terms of masks in the future after the twenty eighth of February. But I do want to really emphasize something that's in the paperwork that I gave you today. The other restrictions, protocols, and guidance is not changing. So we are going to be continuing our physical distancing. We are going to be continuing to identify close contacts and symptomatic students. And anyone identified as a close contact or a symptomatic student, as you know, about three months ago, they were enabled, they could come back to school on the sixth day. They know they didn't have to stay out the entire ten days anymore. But the current guidance would have them in masks for one day, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. If they were a close contact outside of school, or if they were symptomatic, or obviously if if they were positive, they would be in quarantine or isolation. So those kinds of things aren't changing. The only thing that is changed is the not renewing the universal masking mandate. So let me give you a couple of examples. If Tony Parentazi, a third grade student, doesn't feel well and is going to the nurse, the teacher in the third grade would hand Tony a mask, and he would put a mask on on his way to the nurse's office, would continue to wear it at the discretion of the nurse. And if I was demonstrating symptoms that were consistent with COVID nineteen and I was being dismissed, I would continue to wear the mask until I left the building. So as any student who is symptom-free but has been a close contact outside of the school would be wearing a mask from the sixth day to the tenth day. That hasn't changed. Anyone who wishes to wear a mask, and I'll be candid and upfront, I will continue to wear a mask for a variety of reasons, including being safe at home. So no one would be prohibited from wearing a mask in a public school. But what the school committee is being asked to think about is, do you want to go along with and support the mask mandate removal? And allow children and staff to be in school without masks? I've talked, I've talked to a number of people, and I've talked to our school nurse at length. I'm sure you have some questions about the the details, but generally speaking, the people that I've spoken with support the mask mandate coming to an end, but not the timing of this. And the reason is that the twenty eighth of February is the Monday after a February vacation. And for the last, well, during the pandemic, that's the week that we have seen a real spike in the number of cases and students who were in isolation and in quarantine. So Madam Chair, if you want me to make my recommendation now, I can, or I can wait till the questions and answers are over.
Why don't we discuss a little bit? Because I think some more questions will come up. Just for a point of clarification, well, two, two points of clarification. In terms of the people that have to quarantine because of a close contact, that would be close contacts outside of school, because with the test at home, testing at home program, we're no longer contact tracing within the school. Is that, is that, that's correct?
That is absolutely correct. For example, the the close contacts we've identified over the last week have been a sibling, a someone who was exposed to a positive person in a sporting event, and a sleepover. We are still not seeing any in school, again, because of the protocols we have in place.
And then the other point of clarification is that if we were going to change anything regarding our current guidelines, we would actually have to vote upon it because we voted to implement masks before the D E S E guidelines came out to to mask. So although the D E S E is voting not to continue the mask mandate, ours would continue beyond the twenty eighth unless we voted otherwise.
Madam Chair, that is correct.
Yeah, okay.
Although it probably would behoove consideration of taking the matter under consideration and being an active rather than passive action. A lot of people are very interested in this, as you can see by the number of people at the meeting this evening.
And and to that point, you know, at this matter of business, I'd like the school committee to consider a change in the agenda, and I'd like to open up to community correspondence at this time. I did receive some community correspondence prior to this meeting, which I'm happy to share if we do move up community correspondence. And I think in all fairness, you know, for people that might have something that they'd like to share in regards to this matter, that we should then, you know, open it to the community. And I'd like to also request if the committee agrees that we could put a limit on the discussion, both the per community member, you know, statement and the duration of community correspondence during this item of business.
I think moving it up in the agenda is great. It's a great idea. I'd love to hear from the community before we discuss too much in detail amongst ourselves and vote. And in the past, what we've done, which we could use as a template, is we've set a limit of thirty minutes for this segment of the meeting with three minutes per participant in order to be able to hear from a number of people who may want to participate, you know, not exclude people. I don't know if that sounds like a reasonable set of time limits. It worked for us in the past, but open to ideas.
Yeah, that's great.
Can I say just one thing on that? I just counted about seventeen potential guests on the call if everybody wanted to speak, which is probably unlikely, but still three minutes would put us beyond that. So we might want to either add time or truncate testimony or commentary if we might want to do that.
Could also vote to extend the community correspondence if more discussion.
That's what we've done before, too. If you've reached the thirty minute limit and people haven't had a fair chance, we've extended it, so it's not a hard stop.
Do we have to vote upon that? Okay.
I believe so.
Motion, yeah. Could somebody make a motion to move it up in the agenda and to limit the timeframe?
I'll make a motion to move public comment, correspondence, and community input to our next item of business on our agenda this evening, and to limit that section of the meeting to a thirty minute total with three minutes per participant, noting that the school committee could vote to extend that at the end of that segment as needed.
Can I have a second?
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Karis. All in favor of the motion as outlined to unanimous. So I will I think the chat function is already enabled. So if somebody in the community would like to make a statement, you, I ask you please to type your name and your address for the point of record into the chat, and you can either type a comment that you would like me to read out loud, or just indicate that you'd like to make a statement. In the meanwhile, while we're waiting to see who would like to participate, I'm going to pull up the correspondence that I do have.
Gina and Lauren, in terms of the correspondence section, am I to document all the participants and their comments here?
You should document the participant and their address, and you could summarize their comments.
Thank you.
Ms. Lane, is it the email from Erin?
I have it. Sorry, I was taking a minute. So I did receive an email from Erin DeLicio outlining that they're excited about the mask mandate being lifted in Massachusetts. We understand that there are some upcoming decisions to be made concerning Johnson's policy. Mary is going on three years now in a mask, almost her entire elementary experience. We think it's time to let her and her classmates smile, shine bright for all the world to see. Of course, we respect all parents and guardians' decision to mask if they still want to. And she just reflected that will be joyful for their family.
That's the only written correspondence that I had received as well, Ms. Lane.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if I may, I received a lengthy correspondence. I had asked the P T O president to comment. And Ms. Flaherty mentioned in an email to me that they had no unified comment, but they were universally pleased with the way the school committee has handled this pandemic in the past, and were very optimistic that whatever decision the school committee made would be in the best interest of children.
Thank you, Mr. Parentazi. I'm not seeing any messages in the chat.
Ms. Lane, should we start our committee's discussion perhaps, and then allow for community input?
Sure. I think we can do that without another vote.
Yeah.
We've got somebody now.
Why am I not seeing pop up for me? Okay, perfect. So Mary Michael John Pitney from thirty-six Seaview Avenue. My question, if the mask mandate is lifted, will a family who opts to send their child to school unmasked need to participate in other mitigation strategies, pool testing, at-home testing, vaccination, if old enough? I have huge concerns about a family being able to opt out of all mitigation slash prevention. It puts a disproportionate burden on families who may have high-risk health issues. My understanding is there will be, there's no mandatory participation in the other programs for COVID surveillance. Is that right, Mr. Parentazi?
Madam Chair, there is no state guidance or requirement regarding unmasking students and/or staff or visitors that requires them to take any action. The this comment is accurate in terms of someone could, if masks were not being worn by students in the school, that student may not be signed up for either pooled or for at-home testing.
Thank you. While while we're waiting to see if there's any further comments from the community, I'm happy to share my thoughts. Actually wrote them down because I've been thinking a lot about this, and I wanted to make sure that I included all of my points of consideration. And considering the discussion to remove the mask mandate in the Johnson School, I first and foremost thought about how this would affect the student's ability to continue an in-person learning. Now that we have a home testing available and are no longer doing contact tracing in school, I understand that removing the mask mandate will not affect students' ability to attend school due to any concern regarding close contacts within the school. I know the decision to remove the mask mandate by the D E S E was based upon the analysis of data and the current trajectory of the COVID pandemic statewide. However, not all schools are the same, so I took some time to consider how our school might be different than other schools, and if any of these differences put us at greater risk. Our COVID numbers in Nahat throughout this pandemic have been lower than most communities. We're not a high-risk district. We do have a preschool at our school, however, and we know that preschoolers are not yet eligible for the COVID vaccine. However, looking at the D E S E recommendations for masking is only ever applied to students in kindergarten through high school. Preschoolers were not mandated to mask by the state. We simply included them in our mask mandate for consistency within the school. Removing the mask mandate for the whole school would align our preschool with the current guidelines of the state that masks are recommended for children in preschool but not mandated. I'm in support of removing the mask mandate. It's important to note that this is not the same as removing masks in the schools. It's moving from masks being mandatory to masks being optional. There will still be, they will still be necessary in certain settings as outlined. It's important that families discuss with their healthcare providers the risk of their own children and families and take the appropriate precautions as recommended. So those are my general thoughts regarding the mask mandate.
Thank you, Gina. I, I thought, I appreciate all of your comments and your thoughts, and I share them. I observed the governor and the commissioners announcement, and it resonated that, you know, these people are making their decisions based on the data with the professionals who understand this pandemic, and I would be in support of that.
Thank you. We have another comment from Meredith. I am fifty-nine, Little Nahat Road. Coming from a family in a higher-than-average risk situation, we understand that this will likely happen, no masks, but would love for a delay after vacation, given the surge after last vacation. Also, twenty to thirty percent, the number mentioned earlier, was confusing of kids not being enrolled in the test-at-home program seems high. Ms. Sherlock?
I've struggled with this, as I'm sure we've all been giving it lots and lots of thought, I'm sure. And I've been struggling with it quite a bit over the past week or so. And emotionally, I feel torn about it. I feel like we've all been taught and been conditioned to fear COVID nineteen, and reasonably so, and to take precautions to prevent transmission, reasonably so. And I think at this point, what I'm struggling with and trying to think about, how do I incorporate into life, is that COVID nineteen is not going away. No, we're not waiting for the end of COVID. That's not something that's reasonable to wait for. We're, we now are charged with figuring out how to, how to live with COVID being one of the infectious viruses that will be part of humanity going forward. So, you know, R S V, flu, M R M, there are many, many viruses out there that can pose significant risks, especially to certain parts of the population. They always have and always RSV, flu, MMR, there are many, many viruses out there that can pose significant risks, especially to certain parts of the population. They always have and always will. Unfortunately, we have vaccines for some, and we have a vaccine, we have vaccines for this particular virus that are much more effective than for many other viruses that we've been living with over the years. That's not minimizing, in my mind, the, the risk of COVID-19. It's not minimizing the fear of it. It's just trying to categorize it, in my mind, and trying to figure out how to wrap my head around it as we look at the, the years to come. You know, I think right now, vaccines are widely available, and they have been for ages, you know, five and above. They've been free and accessible to our population. Not everyone has chosen to be vaccinated, but vaccines are available. So when it comes to what are we waiting for before we remove masks, I'm struggling to identify anything that's quantifiable. You know, we, we now have information to tell us that vaccines don't prevent us from getting COVID-19. You can still get COVID-19. What vaccines are very, very good at, not 100%, but 90% plus, is preventing severe illness, hospitalization, and death. So in, in my mind, as a healthcare provider, but then also just as a person who doesn't want to get really sick, you know, and who wants to protect my family, some of whom are high-risk. And, you know, I think that's really important to keep in mind. So I feel really lucky, really fortunate, very grateful that we do have these vaccines available. A lot of the science lately has been pointing as well to the fact that while antibody levels, when they're tested, after many months after a vaccine, seem to wane. It's, it's important that we're starting to recognize that the T-cell activity remains quite active and quite protective, which we didn't know for a long time in, in healthcare, how helpful that would be, and, you know, how much we could rely on what. So when it comes to preventing severe illness, hospitalization, and death, we have very reliable vaccines, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So what else would we be waiting for, is what my question to myself has been. If we're recognizing that this virus is with us and will be with us, we have vaccines to protect us, should we choose to accept, to, to get them. And the other thing that's really helpful is the availability of N95 masks, which was not a factor before. We did not have those available to the public before, and certainly not to children. And now we do. And the reason that's a big game changer for me is that there may be individuals who, you know, feel that or have been counseled that they cannot receive the COVID vaccine, or that even though they have it, they're still high-risk. And a surgical mask or a cloth mask on someone else and on themselves only mitigates COVID so much. It's not, it's not 100%, it's not even nearly 100% effective. But an N95 mask is far more protective. And just to add to that, you know, in the hospital setting, when healthcare providers walk into a room with someone who has COVID-19, the protection to that healthcare provider is wearing that mask, the N95 mask. And so, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to give perspective and just say that that's how helpful they are. That is, that is how effective they are. So I guess, again, I was challenging myself, okay, if vaccines are available, if N95 masks are available, if those things are true, what are we waiting for? What's going to be different six months from now as opposed to right now? And I've had a hard time finding something. You know, I know spring and summer do feel more comfortable. They feel more comfortable to me personally as an individual. Yeah, I like to have the windows open. I like to be able to space out and be outdoors when I socialize. It makes me feel safer. Now, does that mean that we wait until spring or summer to lift the mask mandate? Well, if we do, we're accepting that in the fall and in the winter of next year, that's the same as this year. Now we took away masks in spring and summer this year. That doesn't do anything about the fact that next year we're in the same position we are right now. And what are we waiting for again, I guess is my question. And I mean that about myself. What am I waiting for again? I don't know that there's anything I'm waiting for. So with that being said, I think when I really thought it through with all those factors considered, when I tried to take away my own conditioned fear and really think about it, and try to be really fair to all parties involved, I want to make sure that anyone who still feels a need for additional protection, you know, if we can make sure people are really well-informed, the N95s really are very effective, that's a protection offered to those individuals, which is really important for people to know if they still feel at risk being around someone else who's maskless. And so that's, that's important. The vaccine availability is very important. And then the timing of this, I recognize the fact that right after February vacation feels quite uncomfortable, and that we've noted that after holidays in particular, it seems like we've had surges in the virus. That's true. I guess what I came to in my mind is, it is true, and I think I'll always worry a little bit more after times when people gather, necessarily a vacation week actually in my mind, but more holidays. So that being said, that could be a birthday party on a weekend. We don't know when those are, you know, those happen all the time. And sleepover, birthday parties, anything, anything where we're all together. And I think we have to recognize that that's life, and that's what's going to start happening because humans need it. And again, I'm not saying it doesn't make me nervous or afraid. It's just I'm trying to recognize that that's really important. It's important to adults to be with their peers face-to-face and be humans together in the same room. Without it, we can have a risk of of, I don't know, harming our socialization and becoming a, a little self-isolated and then self-aware and not as aware of each other, I think. And and then, you know, when it comes to children, I worry too. And it's not just a worry. It's borne out in research, and pediatricians are very concerned about it. The not seeing people's faces in full, not being able to lip-read as they're learning to, to hear and to read and to interpret social cues. And people who are hearing impaired, people have all sorts of, I know, different situations. Not being able to see a full face is a big deal. So I guess I'm being really long-winded. I'm just trying, I really think it's important to say everything I'm saying. I'm sorry if it's too much, but I want people to understand the layers of thought that are going into this, and this is certainly not a decision being made lightly. But I do think, I think I do support masks, lifting the mask mandate. It feels weird for me to say, but I do think so. The other bit that feels contradictory is that over the past couple of years, we, we as a school committee, and I myself, have cited the CDC on many, many occasions to say, well, the CDC says this is what we should do, the CDC says it's what we should do, because we're living in a world where we had very little guidance and very little information, because it was brand-new. So we were looking to a reputable source for help and support and guidance. I think it's also important to take a step back and realize that the CDC's job is to provide information to our community in the United States about things that can cause risk to us. It's not meant to be an organization that provides mandates to our country about how we operate. It's meant to inform us and allow us to make informed decisions about how we, how we continue our lives. I'd read an article recently that kind of put it well, and said, you know, if the CDC says cooking undercooked meat, you know, eating undercooked meat is a hazard. So if we all took that at its word, that means no one would ever order medium rare meat, you know, when they, when they eat. And people make their decisions, you know, people, there is a risk, and we have, and I think it's the same risk as COVID-19. I'm just trying to think about the way I'm thinking about CDC guidelines. So they're important, they're important to recognize, important to consider. And then I think we still have to make our decisions and figure out as policymakers, you know, what's important to impose on others. So waiting till a few weeks after February vacation, I think is something that I'd be willing to, to consider, because I don't have a strong feeling like February 28th is a magical day either. You know, if we're going to miss the, lift the mask mandate, well, what's special about February 28th as opposed to tomorrow? What's special about that as opposed to a few weeks later? I don't think it's so special. And I don't think that life's going to change right on February 28th, different than next year. So I think I'd be willing to consider that. I, that's basically where I stand, I think, so far, all ears.
Thank you. We have another question in the chat from Mary Michael John Pitney, who is from 36 Seaview Avenue. What's the vaccination rate at the Johnson School among children who are eligible? And that number, I know you gave me a number last week, Mr. Parentasi, but do you have an updated number?
Certainly, Madam Chair. This is probably conservative, because the only way we know these numbers is if a parent actively goes into the vaccination portal of the Johnson Elementary School and, and registers. There are 66 fully vaccinated students of the eligible students who are not four years old or three years old. That represents about 52%.
Thank you. Do any other members of the committee want to make a comment?
I had two questions. Mr. Parentasi, Mr. Andrews, what is your sense from the faculty about how they feel about releasing the mask mandate now versus later at all? And then the second is, I wondered if somebody could just remind me what the vaccination rate is just generally in Nahat.
Madam Chair, through you. I gave the NTA elected representatives an opportunity to give me feedback on this question, just like I did the Parent-Teacher Organization. And I've had several conversations with them. They are somewhat concerned, but they really don't have a global perspective. We we made it very clear to the staff that they can wear masks anytime, and that would not be perceived as a negative. And I actually told them I would be wearing a mask if the mask mandate was lifted here at the Johnson School. So that's the, that's the only input I have, that there's some concern, but they also recognize what members of the school committee have said about a return to normalcy, and, you know, that science is pointing towards the fact that serious illness is down dramatically. Nahat is a healthier community and a more vaccinated community than, than most. So, and they have that, that realistic viewpoint, I think. All of our faculty are vaccinated and boosted. With the, with the exception of one person who cannot be, be, be vaccinated. They are exempt.
I think one thing that's important to remember too is that in, at previous times in this pandemic, we had talked about when, when X percentage of the population is vaccinated, then we would do X, Y, and Z. I think that part of the rationale we were, we were thinking of there was that if you were vaccinated, you wouldn't get COVID. And so that's why behaviors would change if people were vaccinated. And I think the we have, we've come to accept that, you know, vaccinations don't prevent COVID. Therefore, the, you know, the decision-making tree is a little different. They prevent what we fear with COVID. They don't, and quite well, but not perfectly, but quite well. And they don't prevent COVID itself, which is why I think I wouldn't wait for a certain quantity of our school to be vaccinated before making decisions.
And the, the town numbers are quite high. Obviously, it depends on the age group. But the last numbers I looked at, let's say, 55 years old and over is, was in the 70% range, with 65% in the 80% range. And then, you know, as you go down towards the teenagers and 20-year-olds, it drops off precipitously.
Mr. Parentasi, what's our supply like of the N95s that the state had provided a while back? Do we have N95s to offer to staff if they, if they would like to wear them? Is that something that we have to offer?
Madam Chair, through you. We have KN95s, and the ones that we have were specifically tested by MIT to, and they were proven to be 98.7%, effective, I believe. So they are good masks.
How many do we have, Mr. Parentasi? Do we have a?
We have enough for the immediate future.
It would be nice if, literally, I don't know how possible this is, but it would be nice if we had those available to staff.
We do. We, we hand out, for a couple of weeks, we were handing out five per week in a package. They come in a package of five, and we were giving every staff member five. And then they said, you know, no masks, we don't, we don't need them right now.
Yeah, I wonder if people's, if people's perspectives would change if students weren't wearing them? I don't know. So it's great to, to know that we have them and to be able to offer them to staff if our situation in the classrooms changes.
I don't know. Maybe I wasn't clear. Every staff member got 10. In two weeks, five and five, and they weren't using them up that fast. They were wearing them, not using them that fast.
I just wondered if, if that's because their, their population in front of them were wearing masks, and if maybe they would use one a day if people weren't, or use them faster. I don't know. But it's just, it's good to know that we have a bunch and that we could continue to obtain a supply.
Yeah, during the vacation, I, we picked up 2,000 of them.
Do we have any of the N95 masks available for the children if, in the event family chose to mask their children, that if they had needed a mask, would that be available?
I'm not aware of any. I do know, I do know we have juvenile-sized masks that fit better. I'm not sure if they're KN95s. Mr. Andrews, do you know?
I know that we, we don't have KN95 child masks. We do have, we have improved the stock of child masks that are disposable. So the ones that were, we were, you know, pop out the ears and they, they didn't fit as well. We have better fitting child masks at this time.
I would say these are equivalent to a surgical mask. They look like a surgical mask. They feel like one.
So there is something available. It's not.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we give out, we give out probably 12 to 25 a day to students who drop them, you know, they get dirty, they forget them. You know, we're, we have plenty.
We also purchased fabric masks for students who weren't able to purchase their own, and I'm able to provide them as needed to students that we identify as either students who frequently lose their masks and/or students who just don't have the means to purchase, you know, the tens or so fabric masks that you need to keep in the laundry pile at home.
And I would just also like to state for myself that I heard what you said, Lauren, and, you know, I really appreciate your thoughtfulness. Because I, I agree with it, you know, and I, I've gone through it myself, but wouldn't have said it as eloquently as you. And in terms of the date, I, I think that if, my personal opinion about choosing a date, February 28th is the state-mandated mask lifting, and I think that if we delay, I, I feel that it would be responsible if we're delaying for this, then we would have to end up delaying for other things as well. Like you said, with birthday parties or get-togethers, or things that happen outside of here that are outside of our control. So I don't, I don't think that we have to delay. That would be my opinion.
I'll jump in, not seeing any more folks in the chat. I I'm sorry to be a slightly more dissenting voice here, because I really do, I love, actually, on this school committee makeup right now, that we do have people with some deep medical knowledge, you know, three of you have connections to the medical career science, and I really, I really listen to that. I think my own career is also affecting me here in that I, you know, like all of us, we've learned a lot through this last couple of years. And one of the things to go to vaccination first that has surprised the heck out of me, and has been a heck of a journey in my own life, working in communities that are very diverse around just how different folks from different demographics really look at vaccination. But even for all, I've been surprised at how many people have not gotten vaccinated. Very, very surprised. And even the 52% of students, you know, And even the fifty-two percent of students, you know, of the, you know, student community in Nahat, it, it gives me pause, right, fifty-two percent. And I hear you, Lauren, on what you're saying about vaccination as a person who's very, really like, strong about vaccination, spending way more of my professional life than I ever thought, being a vaccination educator out there. When I, when I came to terms on, in January, with the fact that ninety percent of the students in one of my high schools are not, were not vaccinated on January third, ninety. And I was just such a learning mo, by choice, and their families too. And that was such a learning moment for me. But even here in Nahat, where the demographics are arguably starkly different, I have had conversation after conversation with parents who are just do not, are worried about the vaccine and are not getting vaccinated, even that when then they themselves are vaccinated, don't feel comfortable yet vaccinating their children. It flies in the face of what we hear, right, in the news around the science of the vaccine. And yet, perception, and this is my second point, perception is so strong and such long change work. And we're not always right, right, about things. And so where I'm struggling is that while we do have wide availability of the vaccine, Massachusetts has done a hell of a job, you know, with that. That, that doesn't, you know, you can lead a horse to water, you can't make him drink. And, and, and I think that matters here because where it, it comes into play is that teachers and the parents of other students, including some of the parents that have brought up immunocompromised issues, are at a place where they don't have control over what is in front of them. And without this mask mandate. And I'm juxtaposing that next to the, the fact that we went from, you know, one conversation about the masks to that we just got a, we just had a big conversation about the different masks that are most effective in the face of us having a conversation about not, about masking being optional. And I'm, I'm struggling a little to reconcile that as I step back from it for a second. So then that brings me to then, um, teachers and staff at the school, and this is why I asked about teachers and staff at the school, is that I, after the, the holiday break, and I don't know how many people travel per break, I have no idea. But the amount of COVID transmission near, did shut down some schools and nearly shut down ours, you know, not Nahat's, the school system that I work for. And it, it just felt like all of that sort of had about three weeks of constant students and staff being sick. And, and thank goodness, they got over it, you know, for the most part and came back. And again, our vaccination rates in my work are different than here. However, it was enormous, you know, and we saw an uptick, a huge uptick, you know, here in Nahat. And so I worry about the timing of this right now. I also worry if teachers, on one hand, I, you know, there are a lot of teachers that find the masking extremely difficult. As a parent, I'm like so done with it. And I, I look forward to a day that we don't have to have masks. The second hand, I, I also imagine that even as a teacher, if you wear a mask, that it's definitely more protective. I do worry about how they're feeling about their own safety and the safety of different folks in the, in the classroom, you know, with masks. And I am also worried, like, Mary's mom, Miss Erin Delisi was saying in her commentary to you that, you know, we want kids to be able to socialize mask-free, I also want to see everybody smile. I think that that's great and I, and we will get there, we will get there. But I don't know if right before break, I think that's ill-timed. And I also think teachers have been remarkably versatile in bringing to life the personalities and the joy in, in, in their students, you know? I mean, one of the teachers had a Valentine's Day tea where external folks came in, you know, on video, it was amazing, right? Another teacher did personally, she personally drew a picture of every single kid's entire face, right? And granted, that, that is not what we want, we want to go to. But I, I do think that as much, I've been really happy and surprised, happily surprised by how much teachers have been able to bring kids out of the mask even while they were wearing a mask, right? And so I, I, I do worry about how the staff are feeling about this. And I would want them to feel like they were also, that they were, it sounds like, Mr. Parentozzi, they have talked to you a little bit, you know? But I just would want to make sure, I would want to know like that, that, that this was going to be okay. And I also think, I worry about after break, as I think back to what happened after the holiday break in December and what might happen and like, what would be the, what would be the problem with delaying for a month on that, thinking about that break? And I know some of you feel differently, but I wanted to put that out there. That's where I've been wrestling with those things.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. And we do have a comment in the chat, but I just want to address a couple of things that came up as you were, in my mind, as you were talking. You know, I think that the conversation about masks is all about choice. And, you know, I think it's a good conversation to acknowledge that there are choices available. And I want to, you know, highlight the fact that removal of a mask mandate isn't the same thing as removing masks. There, you know, even if we choose to remove masks, the mask mandate in the school, there are lots of choices for staff and students, you know, to use cloth masks, surgical masks, and particularly for the staff and ninety-fives, I, or KN ninety-fives. I know that, you know, there are some KN ninety-five child-sized masks that you could also purchase online for children. And you know, to the point of discussion about timing and, you know, what happened after the holidays? I mean, I'm not an analyst of, you know, statistics and, and, you know, spread of viruses. But, you know, my understanding is that it was a perfect storm of a new variant and the holidays where many people gather. And just the timing of, you know, being during the winter, which we know is a typical time for viruses to increase. And, and because of that perfect storm, there was a huge increase in, in the COVID numbers that we were seeing in the community. And those are, those cases that we were seeing in school were all cases that were spread in the community. So you know, outside of school, whether it's in one week or two weeks, you know, we're all going to be going into the community, choosing to wear our masks. And less and less will be mandated to wear our masks. So when you go to this, you know, supermarket or the, you know, any sort of store, any sort of indoor, you know, facility, whereas there were mandates before, it's now going to be a choice. And so, you know, barring just staying at home, this is something that's going to be, you know, present everywhere you go in the community. So I do think, you know, circling back around to the idea of masks, I'm, I'm confident that we have some really great you know, mask options for the, for the students. And I hope that, you know, people continue to explore with their healthcare providers, what their individual risk is for their child and their family. And, and, and I'm confident that our school is going to embrace and support, you know, the individual choice when it becomes a choice. There are a bit too, timing-wise, I don't think I have very strong feelings about, you know, if the masks mandate is lifted. I don't think I have, personally have a very strong feeling about a date attached to it. Like I said earlier, I think, you know, it's interesting because when these mandates are lifted statewide, like it's being announced as February twenty-eighth, well, what's the difference tomorrow or February twenty-eighth? I mean, no one even has to do anything to prepare, they simply just don't put it on. It's not like something has to be distributed first. So these dates are always kind of arbitrary in my mind. And if our staff and our school nurse would prefer to wait a couple of weeks, when we've been doing this already for a couple of years, I mean, I think I personally would be fine with that, you know, if that would help. Because I don't think that I personally have some attachment to that date. And I know what you mean, that there isn't kind of a hard and fast reason in my mind to delay it a couple of weeks, Michelle, because there, I don't know what I would rely on there either. And I, like I said earlier, I think things are happening every day that we're, we're not delaying for. But at the same time, you know, respecting people's experience and, you know, what people have gone through and comfort levels. If, if that would be more comfortable, I don't have a strong reason to say that I'm married to the date of February twenty-eighth. I think it was chosen in my mind, kind of arbitrarily. To my knowledge, I mean, there might be a really good reason behind it, I just don't know it. And I just, so I think I would be fine with delaying it a couple of weeks if that would help, you know, the staff and the nurse's office. There is a comment in the chat from Miley Streia at fifteen High Street. Do we know what the numbers are of unvaccinated children in the school who have had the virus? This may make our numbers better as they would have a level of protection as well. I mean, I think we know the number of documented vaccinated students and the number that have had the virus, but I don't know that we know the overlap in that. I think the important thing to recognize attached to that would be that even if people have a level of protection, we can still get COVID again, there's still new variants you could get. So I think relying on either having had COVID or vaccination was what we were relying on before as, as something that made us feel better, because it did. And now we're kind of recognizing we can still spread the virus, even if we have antibodies. It's just about what will happen as a consequence of that, that we get protection from, whether having had COVID or being vaccinated, and especially being vaccinated.
I had one question. I wonder, Mr. Parentozzi, does the school committee have to make this decision? Could the school committee give you and you the power to make this decision in, in, in whatever way and with whoever you felt, you deemed correct? Or do we have to do this right now with you?
Madam Chair, through you. The school committee would have to make some type of decision and give me some direction. Because if you take no action, that the mask mandate stays in place until further notice. Interestingly, my recommendation is going to be along the lines of what you just mentioned, Ms. Anderson. But I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait till the.
I think we're ready, do we, we would like to hear your thoughts on.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I agree with so much of what you said, I mean, for a variety of reasons. So, but after speaking to the nurses and the staff, my recommendation is the following, that the school committee remove the mask mandate effective March seventh. That's a week from the twenty-eighth. However, giving me the authority in consultation with the public health nurse and our school nurse to delay that to March twenty-first, if there's an explosion of cases. And I'm, I can't really sit here and tell you what that, that number is. I can tell you that in the two weeks after January vac, after the December vacation, we had twenty-two positive cases. We had five all of the school year before, from, excuse me, from September to December nineteenth, we had five. Now, there was a new variant that was more transmittable, we all know that. So what I'm suggesting is, yeah, the science is there. The timing, by the way, February twenty-eighth is February twenty-eighth is because way back when, they actually had the mask mandate in three rolling six-weeks decisions. And the, and it runs out on the twenty-eighth. And they didn't want to put another one, no matter how short in, at the state level. Okay, I mean, but I don't think it was related to anything other than they had one then for six weeks, and then another one for six weeks, and then a third one. So that, that's my memory of it anyway. So you would authorize me to delay it from March seventh to March twenty-first, that gives us some time. There'll be a school committee meeting in there, so you can change your mind again. That allows us to use the science as we collect it from the, both the pool testing on the Tuesday, which would be March first, and the at-home testing on the twenty-seventh of, of February. Whereas if we take it off on the twenty-eighth of February, we're really at the mercy of whatever may happen. And I don't really think seven days is going to make a major difference, just like several of you have said. And if the professionals who work for us say, whoa, this number's too high, you know, you consider all the kids are vaccinated, vaccinated, or all the staff who are vaccinated, all the people who've already had it, that this, this doesn't feel right, then we don't delay it forever, we say, okay, let's take a, another look at it on the twenty-first. And if nothing, if it, if it dips back down again, twenty-first, we have no masks.
I love what you're saying, Mr. Parentozzi, because also I worry a little bit about even if, even if, just pretend world, we're not worried about safety and we're just thinking about illness and absence. No, it's a major toll on the school too, and on the staff and as peers to each other. If we have a great number of absences, if there's a, you know, transmissible variant of COVID, that even if we, we just say for intensive purposes, isn't going to scare us about hospitalization, but is going to impact our ability to go about our lives and get to work. I think, I think that makes a lot of sense to give ourselves that flexibility. So I personally like what you're saying. One question is, are you looking at new cases after we return to school? Or would that increase, you know, the numbers that you'd be looking at include students or staff who test positive during the vacation and are still quarantining when the, come February twenty-eighth, when we come back from February vacation?
That's such a good question. My, my answer is a very simple one, whatever the nurses tell me.
Yeah, it's something the public health nurse would be a, a source of that.
Yeah, they're the experts. My gut is, it's not only during the vacation, just kind of when during the vacation. If there's, if the Thursday and Friday, right before we come back, there's a, a real pop, that would be different than, you know, to, a couple way back in the week before, who are already through their, their their isolation period, I think. But I may be wrong, maybe, maybe the opposite is true, because if they're in isolation, they can't impact the school.
Right.
But the short answer is, we're, I, I would be more concerned about the tests on the twenty-seventh and the first cool test on March first, and then any follow-up antigens based if we have positives on the first. Because they're the ones we don't know about. They're, the, the public health department is already going to know about the ones during vacation, or, or, or should theoretically.
Because for me, the question I have about the numbers and then looking at the data that we have throughout the, the school year so far, so you know, there are weeks prior to that vacation in December, Christmas vacation, where the numbers were higher than they had been in the fall. And then we had that one spike, which according to the graph, looked like it was about maybe fourteen at its highest.
Yep.
And, you know, we're not in that situation currently. You know, our numbers are back down low. And so like what, I, I just want to know what, what, I know you said you don't have the number, but what, what are we looking for? What is the, what is the pop?
Again, I don't know. I mean, in the last month, we've had two cases, both transmitted outside of school. If we come If we come back and the first pool testing, we have, I don't know, 10 cases, I would be concerned. And I would then consult with the, the nurses and say, you know, should, should I inform everybody that we're going to wait till the 21st of March? Um, I don't think a couple of cases matter. I mean, we, we have one or two a week now. Uh, it's the variant that's different. Uh, it's more transmittable, I believe. Um, but you're absolutely right. The other difference is the period between Thanksgiving and the December break is shorter. So I'm not sure um, if the, if that's not related, you know, with those early, those early December numbers. Um, you know, mathematically, it's, it shouldn't be, but who knows?
I think what I like about that proposal, um, Mr. Parentozzi, is that it balances, you know, it rests on some good science in thinking about the fact that the cases are going down, hopefully will continue to do so, that we have seen blips for different reasons. Um, so it's paying attention to that, you know, around breaks. And I also think that it balances also the um, how people perceive their own safety and how different key constituent groups, staff, parents, kids um, in our community as a whole, right? It balances that in and gives you some space to be able to have time to check in with nurses, with, with staff um, here while you make a, a recommendation for either the, the 7th or later in March. I feel like it gives choices to where people are going to be on the front line with this. Um, and that makes sense to me.
The, uh, Madam Chair, through you, the thing I thought about in addition to the being sure that there's not this massive uptick is it may even be a motivation for some students and parents and guardians to be a little bit more careful during the break. Because the test results, when we come back, have an impact on uh, on, on the decision-making uh, down the road. Maybe not.
Yeah.
You know, maybe I'm overthinking it, you know?
I think what, what feels nice about it to me is that it's, you know, it's recognizing the fact that we haven't had a crystal ball throughout this entire ex, experience in a pandemic. And we've made the best decisions that we have been able to, in my opinion, but we um, we've always recognized that things are fluid and that we have, we may have to pivot, we may have to change. And this gives us the flexibility to do it while maintaining a clear goal that we're trying to be in line with what we believe to be the next steps, which is taking away the mask mandate, but it's giving a little bit of flexibility to our local leaders in the school to make sure that everyone really feels ready and safe. And so I think, I don't see a downside personally. I think, I think that's very respectable and reasonable. And I would appreciate the, the guidance from our school nurse and public health nurse as we, as we approach it. I think it makes sense.
Um, I don't see any further discussion in the chat, uh, so no further public comment. So I'm actually going to close the chat function and close community correspondence. Um, and certainly if there's no further comments from the committee, if somebody would like to make a motion.
I would, I'll be happy to make a motion. I'll make a motion um, to remove the mask mandate for the Nahon School District effective March 7th and give our superintendent Parentozzi the authority to delay the removal of the mask mandate until March 21st, if recommended by the public health and school nurse. Is that motion appropriate? Is what you intended, Mr. Parentozzi? I like what you said.
Thank you. Yeah, that's perfect.
I'll second that motion made by Ms. Sherlock.
Ms. Anderson? Any discussion? Uh, all in favor of the motion as outlined, Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Dan, Ms. Karas and myself, motion carries. Thank you. All right, so we can move on to the budget hearing. And this is actually, we had the budget hearing immediately before our meeting tonight. Um, Mr. Parentozzi, do you want to give us a quick summary?
Well, the first thing I'd like to say, Madam Chair, is I appreciate the patience that the members of the community and the school committee demonstrated with my uh, use of technology. Thank you. Uh, I reviewed the, uh, the superintendent's budget, which uh, totals $4 million. And I've, of course, lost my page. I apologize. $4,357,564.73. And by the way, we always round, so you won't see the 73 cents very, much longer. Uh, which represents a 2.62% increase. Uh, I explained which part of that budget i- is relegated to the district, to the town and to the Johnson School. And there were several very good questions about um, cost containment of um, out-of-district students and transportation. And the um, Madam Chair, it's now up to the school committee. Uh, the superintendent has presented its budget in a public hearing and turns it over to the school committee for consideration.
I'll open up any discussion from the school committee regarding the budget as proposed.
As I mentioned earlier, I appreciate the presentation that Mr. Parentozzi gave earlier. I thought it was really concise and informative. And it reflected, in my opinion, a very responsible budget. I don't have anything to add.
Question on process. Um, I was unfortunately late for the budget hearing and I apologize. Um, so should I abstain from the vote? Because I only saw the last five minutes.
You do have the, you have the presentation.
PowerPoint.
I did review it.
Review.
Yeah, I did review it, yes. But I didn't, I came 25 minutes late, which was not good.
Then you could ask questions now.
Yeah, if you have questions, because you weren't there for the hearing, but you were able to review the budget before the meeting.
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this time, but thanks. Thank you.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget um, in the amount of $4,357,000. I'm sorry, let me repeat that. $4,357,565.
And 73 cents.
Hey, I'm rounding. And 73 cents.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Sherlock. All in favor of approving the budget as outlined? Ms. Anderson, Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Karas, Ms. Dan and myself. Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Parentozzi, for all of that. Um,
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Facility use?
Uh, yeah, actu- actually, since our last meeting, the
Sorry, Michelle has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're muted. You're muted.
I was typing and I missed um, who was the second? So I have the motion by Patty and then the second. What's, now I'm, it was Lauren. I'm having amnesia. Thanks.
And it was unanimous. All right, Mr. Parentozzi, the facilities?
Uh, thank you. Uh, since the last school committee meeting, there has been no change in the Johnson Elementary School facility use. We still only have the adult basketball on Wednesdays.
Okay. And the school calendar for 2022 and 2023?
I'm sorry, a super quick point about the facility. So the mask mandate will, will, will correspond with what we voted on for the school, correct, Mr. Parentozzi? So the mask mandate stays according to the dates that we talked about earlier.
Yes, it will. And the mask mandate will also, for adults using the building, would also always be consistent with the town on the hot. You know, whichever one was more, whichever is more restrictive.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's actually a good point, is that Nahon um, removed its mask mandate in the town. So, and um, they're voting on it at the next um, selectmen meeting, but that has, decision has already been made.
I believe it's already off.
Right, so by voting it there, what is it called when you um,
Ratify.
Rectify it?
Ratify.
Not if I
Yeah, I went to a meeting at the, the, the town hall today and several of the individuals I was with did not have masks on.
I guess I'm not sure why we're not able to meet in person then. Do you know?
I was wondering that myself.
I asked the question today and I was told that the Board of Selectmen tomorrow evening will extend the remote uh, decision through April, at least. I am not, I don't know why.
Well, we can all listen into the meeting and figure that out.
We can ask too. Get the meeting and ask.
I believe it may have something to do with the technological difficulties they are having uh, with broadcasting. Um,
But we don't, no. Do you know, we actually had a question about that. Is that a Nahon um, you know, in the hunt decision that we broadcast them? Because it's actually not, to my knowledge, mandated that we broadcast them.
It um, it, it is your decision.
Okay.
If, if you choose to go in person with no broadcast, uh, then we can make, well, there's several things we can do. Number one is, depending upon how elaborate we wanted to become, we could, we could video record it and then post it. Uh, so the only thing that would be missing would be a live broadcast. Uh, or we could um, obviously distribute and post the minutes uh, in uh, with more aggressiveness.
Right, with more detail. Yeah. So I guess, and, and, and not that I'm um, suggesting that we do that, that we meet without, you know, making it available for people to listen. Um, just that it's been a long time that this technological difficulty seems to be at least part of the reason that we can't meet in person. So I'm just trying to drum up some ideas.
Madam Chair, I may.
Please.
Uh, we could also set up a laptop a few feet away from the table and broadcast like we are right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and people would be able to capture the, the voice.
Mm-hmm.
That would have been an appealing option too, because people could technically, if we so chose, participate from home in, in a hybrid model in that way, right, Mr. Andrews?
That's right. You know, maybe myself, I could monitor the remote folks and if someone had a, wanted to chime in during co- public comment, I could um, unmute them and have them joined by laptop or computer.
Um, I think there was a reason that we weren't going to make that an option. And it was, I, I don't remember what it was um, at a previous conversation, but I can reach out to the town hall before tomorrow's meeting and at least ask the question.
I think part of it was the support that the town would have to provide, right, Mr. Parentozzi, in regards to a hybrid approach and concerns about the technology not working for that. But if we were taking it on ourselves, it might be different.
Uh, yeah, Madam Chair, through you, it, uh, my memory is that the Board of Selectmen attempted a hybrid model and it went badly.
Hmm.
I don't know exactly what that means, but uh, it, it wasn't, it didn't improve communication. It made it frustrating.
And Madam Chair, if I may add, it's, if we only have one computer, we won't have the echoing problem that we had when we were first learning about how to use Zoom and whatnot. So I know that was an issue. When we had three, if you have three people on the Zoom call at the same time in the same room, it's an issue.
Yeah, uh, that's how we do our IEP meetings with parents who uh, choose not to come in in person. We have a, we have a group of people, we have one computer set up and it's not the best, but it's, it's, it's certainly better than nothing. And it does get us all in the same room, finally.
Yeah, I think like one of the byproducts of this whole global adventure we've been on is that this technology or something related certainly ups democratic, the potential for democratic participation, which, you know, if anything, these political times have taught us is really important. And so I, I think if we can pull this off as a town so that people can contribute as they want to and can um, using this technology in addition to coming in person, I just, I think it would be, um, it just feels like a good thing.
Um, I think we're moving on to the Johnson School Calendar. Mr. Parentozzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the only difference in this calendar of members of the school committee is the recommendation that was made, I believe, by the chair that in the last box at the bottom, it says, uh, no school on Monday, June 19th, 2023. Other than that, it's uh, the same calendar.
And this is potentially meaning that we could vote to approve this calendar?
Yes, ma'am.
Any members of the school committee have any questions or comments regarding the um, calendar? Can't exactly see what page it's on. Oh, it's on page 22 of the packet for tonight. So it's the um, Johnson School Calendar for August 2022 through June 2023.
And sorry, Tony, you said, and so this isn't the actual one, there's also, the actual one has Juneteenth off, marked off, right?
Yeah, um, if you look at the bottom of the calendar, Madam Chair, through you, the confusion last time was that if the school year got extended past Juneteenth, then it wasn't clear that there would not be school on that day. So this one, it has the last half day of school on the 15th, but then, of course, it has five more days that would bring it to the 23rd, stating emphatically in the box that there won't be school on Monday, the 19th.
So historically, we'll designate a last day of school if there's no snow days and then outline when the school year would end if there's five school days. But obviously, there could be one snow day, three snow days, you know? So um, depending upon how many snow days we have, if we had none, the school year would end on June 15th. If we had two,
Right.
Uh, if we had two, it would push us ha- um, past to the following week. So
Wednesday, right? The following Wednesday, because then Monday would be
So if there was two, we would end on Tuesday.
Wednesday, because the 19th would be Monday and that would be a day off, right?
Correct, but then the last day of school would be Tuesday.
Right, and if there were two snow days, then it would be Wednesday.
Yeah, that, in, in, the way I look at it, the thing that that line explains is why if you had, if you add to the 15th a week, it's eight days.
Yeah, correct.
Why that week is eight days long?
Right.
I would just point out just really quickly, uh, for the community, if anyone's confused about why we have kindergarten screening. Um, you know, basically, kindergartners don't go the first day that one through six go. Um, they go a little bit later because we have kindergarten screening during that first week of school. But it, um, we've discussed this in past meetings and past years and been advised by um, our specialists that this is in the best interest of the staff and the students to be able to assess them more in real time before entering kindergarten as opposed to doing it in the spring, when so much development happens in those few months. So doing it right before the school year is better for the children and better for our staff to be able to prepare for the needs that may have shifted over those few months, right, Mr. Parentozzi? And, and that, you know, doing it, we can't really do it a few days before school starts because it's not contractually, uh, when our, our teachers are working. So I think, yeah, that's why it's suffered this way for anyone who might be, can, might not understand from home.
Yeah, Madam Chair, through you, this was a strong recommendation of our early childhood staff to get that screening and um, relationship built up right before the beginning of the year as close to the actual start as possible, because children change so much over the summer, a few weeks can make a big difference.
And then, Mr. Parentozzi, I know you said that Juneteenth is marked on here, or what would happen to that day, depending on snow days. I don't see it on page 22 at the bottom. depending on snow days. I don't see it on page twenty-two at the bottom.
It's there, it's right next to June twenty-third on the bottom line. It says no school on Monday, June nineteenth. It's the very last line.
It's actually the last box, in the box.
Yeah, the last line in the last box.
Oh, right, okay, now I see it, sorry. And then does it, do we explain why, just because this is um sort of, y- you know, sort of a n- a newer part of the celebration of June nineteenth is an important day in American history is a more mainstream conversation now than it was, say, five years ago, so.
That's a, that's a really good point. When when I created the calendar with Ms. April, I was really at a loss for how to do this. Because it's most likely that we won't be celebrating the day. If you go back for the last five years, you know, that many days after the the um scheduled end of the hundred and eighty-third day, we we only had one or two days, so, yeah, I didn't want to make it a box and then really confuse people because somebody would say, well, that's after the the end of the school year. So uh the chair had the idea, well, just put in, you know, your your typical uh statement and then say, by the way, there's no school on Monday, June nineteenth. So it it, you're right, it is not explained why.
I would just think about, um, I'm not going to belabor this now, but I would just, as, you know, one of our goals, I think in our strategic plan is um is around cultural inclusion and um and, you know, I think that this is a a good thing for the school system and so just making sure people know, because I I know I um I ran into a lot of questions about it um uh from people in in a conversation at the Little League Field last year about, and nobody knew what um Juneteenth was about, so I think just making sure people understand that that's an active choice of the school system and why it could be a one-liner, and people go look it up, but um it just feels important, so people aren't all wondering why that would be a holiday.
Yeah, what 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 I can do is um in addition to saying no s- no school on Monday, June nineteenth, with the school committee's permission, I could put three asterisks and then have another little note at the bottom and explain.
Yeah, and just talking about emancipation, you know, I think um just, you know, one line, like this was the day that finally um everybody was emancipated. Um who had enslaved, just feels important. Thanks for the clarification on the days.
Thanks for the idea.
So we would um make a motion to approve the proposed calendar on page twenty-two of the packet for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year with the addition of um the information regarding the meeting of June nineteenth, of the Juneteenth holiday.
Yep, perfect.
Are you making that motion?
Motion to the proposed school calendar on page twenty-two of the packet for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year with the addition of information regarding the June nineteenth.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Caris, Ms. Sam, myself, motion carries. Uh so moving on in the agenda, uh the policy DJE bidding requirements.
Madam Chair, this is just an explanation for members of the school committee unless a member of the school committee uh wishes to move forward with anything different. At the last meeting, we talked about changing the bidding requirements of of uh policy DJE from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. And we uh you decided not to, which is fine with me. I just think you needed to know that if you look past that policy, I got a um an urgent advocacy needed communication from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents that they're trying to get that changed from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. In terms of um when it would be required to have a full-blown bidding uh packet, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not recommending you do anything different. I just didn't feel comfortable with you not knowing that. You know, like, a couple of days after you decided to not go to fifty, that it may be a hundred before before we know it. So um once again, there's there's no request on my part to to alter it. Uh it's just informational for you to know that there is a movement among superintendents uh that seems to have a lot of 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 traction in the uh the House and the Senate to raise that number to a hundred thousand. However, your policy can still be twenty-five thousand, as long you can have any number you want on your policy as long as it doesn't exceed what the law says. That's the bottom line.
You know, I think I heard from you at the last meeting that keeping the current policy in place wasn't a huge hardship, but if at any point in the future that changes, you know, our budget is obviously a lot different than other school districts, but, you know, just let us know if if that.
Yeah, the number, the number of uh contracts we have is minimal compared to a, you know, a district with five thousand students or twenty thousand students, obviously.
Um and then the last uh order of business under old business, which, you know, maybe in hindsight we should have discussed first is the school committee meetings. And, you know, as we said at the beginning of the meeting, we're meeting remotely because the um town hall isn't currently allowing uh in-person meetings, so uh we should, as a point of order, we should vote again, to reinstate that, um you know, perhaps for the time being, until the town allows in-person meetings, that we'll continue to meet uh remotely via Zoom.
I suppose I'll make that motion begrudgingly. That we continue to meet via Zoom until such time that we can meet in person.
Ms. Sherlock, all in favor? Uh Ms. Careless, Ms. Sherlock, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Sam, and myself, I will try and attend the meeting tomorrow night though to understand and maybe express some interest in in-person meetings, if possible. Um, all right, so um I would ask if it's okay with the rest of the community committee, um we have a couple of uh people at the meeting tonight who um are here to discuss Island Roots and seeing where we're at in the agenda and how much time out of their evening we've taken so far. If uh other members in the committee are comfortable with that, I'd like to move that order of business up to discuss now. Jessie and Thomas, I'm so sorry that it's been a lengthy meeting. Um is everybody comfortable with that? Okay.
All new business up, Gina, I just, this point of business.
Just this point of business is okay. And I'm sorry again, do we have to vote upon that? No, okay, all right. Uh Jessie and Thomas, I'm happy to turn the meeting over to you. I'm glad that you didn't fall asleep in the meanwhile. Um and if you have something to share, I can um make you a host.
Um, I do have a document, if I could do a screen share.
Sure, and if you'd like to introduce yourself, welcome.
Thanks, and thank you, I appreciate it. The ma- the the things you discussed were obviously important to discuss in a timely manner, so um I'm Jessie Stevens and that is Thomas Phillips. Um, we are co-founders and I'm the CEO, Thomas is the CEO of Island Roots Camp Group. Um and we currently run the Johnson Extended Day with Island Roots program, which is the after-school program takes place at Johnson School, Monday through Friday on school days and some half-days too. So I what's funny is, as soon as you made a change, I think I couldn't, there was a screen share option. Oh, there it is, let's see.
I'm not giving the tutorial.
This is all new to me, but I think you can see this document. Okay, so it's just a brief overview um of kind of where we are this year in our programming. We've provided two enrollment options, four-thirty and six o'clock, which are consistent with our two, we run currently two other extended day programs um in the area. Enrollment is between twenty-one to twenty-six children a day. We've actually capped it at twenty-six, given the space and kind of standard best practice ratios for staffing in extended day programs. So we have, um, we're actually at the point where we are at capacity, is it three days a week? On Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, we're currently at capacity. We have been or continuing to hire for the school year. We did bring on a third staff person um who is there two or three days a week, which is always helpful. And Wednesdays, we still have, I think, about four spaces in the program and Fridays is always a low attendance day and all, in any after-school program I've ever been a part of. Um just because it's the end of the week and people like to do other things. Um, we've had pretty significantly low enrollment for the six o'clock, six o'clock pickup time. Um every day is less than four and some days it's only one or two children who are enrolled that late, with almost all children being picked up by five-thirty. However, there are times where people are still getting picked up at six based on needs of the family. Um usually that's related to working parents who are um not working at home right now and the commute time, which is, we're starting to see people return to that. We are considering across the board for all of our programs, because of COVID, we've seen a shift in attendance on the early end of all of our programs to propose changing the six PM enrollment option to five-thirty. It, again, this is not the necessary thing, but we see, given the use that we're seeing and the interests that isn't there really, and the need to staff, we always staff two people in the program regardless of enrollment. So even if it's just one child, they're always two staff present. Um and also considering the transportation, um I think it's that the the last bus leaves Nahont at six and that's like at six, so if a student is staying till six, then that staff person may have some transportation concerns depending on their needs. And then we maintained rates that were previously set by the school committee when we um took on this program. Um and those were shared with us. We include snack. We provide a snack to the kids. We have free play, organized activities, and homework help. Our main location is in the library at the school. Um I know a lot of people on here are familiar with our program, but um just for those who are listening and may not know, um we often get outside as much as possible and um it is a range of ages from pre-kindergarten through, I think, our, we do have a sixth fifth or sixth grader in the program, but usually it drops off after third grade, and that's consistent across the board for programming in general. Um so current fees are listed there, as you can see. Um I made this this hourly rate. I basically took the number of hours we have across the the school year in terms of after-school days and also half-days, because we do include half-days in our programming fees. We don't charge extra unless someone's attending on a day that they don't usually attend the after-school program. And currently, our sibling discount in Nahont is that the second sibling receives a fifty percent off discount with twenty-five percent for each additional sibling. Um and I don't think we have any families with more than two siblings enrolled at this point. Um extra hours, we bill at ten dollars an hour, rarely at this point. Um and then there's a drop-in rate of thirty-five dollars a day, so that's for people who aren't enrolled either at all or on a given day and they're attending on a day that they're not enrolled. So our proposal for twenty-two, twenty-three would be to minimally raise the hourly rate um for four-thirty enrollment to one hundred dollars a month. Um and that's per day, so if someone enrolls only for Mondays, they're paying a hundred dollars a month. If they enroll for Monday, Wednesday, that's two hundred dollars a month. Um and then for five-thirty to go to one thirty-six per month. And then we would also propose the sibling discount would be twenty-five percent for all additional siblings past the first sibling who's enrolled. Um to give you an idea of comparison, I know every program is very different. Our typical sibling discount is five percent across all of our other programs. So we see this as kind of a, an in-between sort of arrangement for this. And then drop-ins, um just going up to forty dollars a day. Drop-ins include all the time, so anyone can stay as long as they need to on a drop-in rate. And that extra hours would be billed at eleven dollars an hour. And the the thinking behind a lot of those the extra hours and drop-in rates is really that there is a larger admin load for those sorts of things in terms of reporting extra hours, in terms of communicating back and forth with parents on days when people need to attend and getting that information to all the right people, so that kids don't go to the ru- wrong line at the end of the school day, things like that, so um that's kind of where we are in our, our thinking ahead to next year. Um so I will leave, I think this is probably the most useful information for you guys. I know that, I believe Tony has a copy of this that he can share if he hasn't yet. Um I'm also happy to share it with anyone if they'd like to look it over. And I'm happy to answer questions either about the program or about some of what is here.
Thank you for sharing. I want to uh say, um, you know, you know, personally reflective how wonderful the um Island Roots program has been for my s- my students and I know that other, you know, parents in the community feel the same way, so uh thank you for coming to the Johnson School and for sharing this information. So based upon your proposal, um is that indicating that you're, you would like to move forward with uh the enrollment being at five-thirty as opposed to six, six o'clock for next year?
We would like to, or even if it's something where we don't necessarily have to keep it at that on a permanent basis, but we could kind of start the school year there and then see. I think in some ways we're seeing lower enrollment until six, because people don't, I think for some families, six is too much time for them, but they may stay till five, if five-thirty was an option, or if five was an option, um we've seen that before. Um but that, at least trying to start the school year at five-thirty and then also gauging interest in the community and and if six, you know, that's the other thing that's a little unpredictable these days with extended daycare is the needs of the community and and the changing workforce and the nature of parents going back to work. And so when families are working at home, often they're better able, you know, they they're winding down around four-thirty, kids can come home and maybe do their own thing on the side. Whereas when people are in the office or wherever they are doing their work and they are dealing with commutes, then that tends to shift a little later till six o'clock, so I think we would need to just really be in touch with the community in terms of getting that feedback to see what what the interest is, but our proposal would be to start at five-thirty heading into next year.
Madam Chair, if I may, um historically, our after-school program, when we ran it, ended at five-thirty.
Yeah, no, I understand that, yeah. The only other um comment I have is um, you know, the proposed increase for the four-thirty enrollment um is, you know, pretty substantial. It's a, you know, twenty-eight percent increase, and if you take a family of two uh children um who stay until four-thirty, it's actually a fifty percent increase. Um taking into consideration the change in sibling discount. So that, that probably is the biggest thing that I see that might be a hardship for some of our families.
I completely understand that, um as a, as a parent of two kids, my, myself, I I've seen that in programs as well. Um, I think that some of what we're trying to do is also kind of weigh the programming, the training, the the staffing we're able to provide and support we're able to provide with the costs and expenditures. Um but I understand that that is, that is a, it's an increase for those families. We do like to kind of simplify the fees, so if that's something that, you know, if the committee wanted to have us kind of go back to the drawing board and look at something else and and re-present other information, we could do that. Um, we do, we're, unfortunately, we are not in a position as a, as a fairly new small business. Um we're not in a position to provide kind of financial assistance to students, although we're looking into. Um, we're not in a position to provide kind of financial assistance to students, although we're looking into establishing a nonprofit arm. That would be able to do that. We're just not there right now. Um. However, there, we've also talked about potentially working. On case by case basis with families who may need additional support and we've been able to work with the school on that as well.
I guess that's where my comments would go. I, you know, I was, my two sons were at Island Roots for a while. And I really liked it. And um, I've, I, you know, as a person who has, um. You know, like I, I, I found the fees really reasonable when um, I felt like exceedingly so. Um, compared to some of the income levels in Nahant, right? Um, including my own as a superintendent of schools, very reasonable. And um, and so I, I think your fees probably could be more, slightly more aggressive. Everybody's gonna get mad at me after this meeting. Um, slightly more aggressive for, you know, like, cause the spread here in Nahant is very wide, right? There are some, some significant economic challenges for some families. And there are other families that I, I think need is not a huge factor. And so, you know, you said, you know, we're open to other ideas. I do, what I worry about is like, uh, somebody parenting by themselves. With two kids where this is the lifeline and the reasonableness of the fees has made that possible. And so I would never like want, if there's a way that there's um. Especially if that, you know, I'm making a guess and I don't know this to be true, that there might be lesser in that number, right? And if that were true, that there, there's some financial circum- like circumstance allocation that you could give. And I, I heard you just say like, we're not in a position to do this, but if it was only for a few families between you. And the school system, I wonder if there's something we could figure out there, right? Even if it meant that it had to be a little bit more aggressive on the other end over time. Um, so I, you know, I just, I would hate to have somebody um, feel like their, you know, their job was on the line. Particularly if they worked in Boston, it's higher south. There's no way you could leave Boston at five when things go back to more normal and get to Nahant at six. You just can't do it. Um, and so I just have some, I have compassion right now thinking about that. If there's a way you could carve a third way, maybe through that.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Um, my question was similar um, about the fees in the hourly rate. And is it common for programs to charge? An hourly rate that's different based upon the length of time that's.
Not, not typically. And these, um, these numbers. Basically the hourly, so I think across the board, we're seeing a move in after school programming, childcare program. Programming moving away from hourly rates altogether. Um, mainly because of the, the kind of, the administrative things that happen when we get into an hourly rate versus a daily rate. Or a monthly rate or an annual rate. But I think, I think some of it was potentially that the, the current fees were based on. Maybe a number of school days and hours, but maybe not inclusive of half days, which we decided to add in. And so. That kind of affected the hourly rate for four thirty and five thirty differently. Um, and also I think that. In, in, in thinking about the capacity of families and their ability and looking at what the rates are currently and shifting. Shifting up however, and we're seeing the need to pay staff more with minimum wage increasing and, and those sorts of things. But also that, the, I think it was at the higher rate, we, we didn't raise as much. Because we're dropping down to five thirty at that point instead of keeping that six o'clock. So it looks like a little bit of an uneven shift up. Typically, I, I think the hourly rate is usually standard across the board when we look at them. These for some reason weren't, so we kind of kept it. We kind of left it the way that it was. Um, and to the point that um, Ms. Anderson made that. I think generally we, we, our rates are typically much higher in other programs. But we acknowledge that there were set fees established by the school committee for this program before we came on board. And we wanted to respect those and um, keep them at what they were before.
I appreciate your, you know, containment of the fees in respect to our historical um, charges. It's really helpful to our community. And I do think it makes it very accessible to, you know, members of our community who might otherwise be excluded. So I think it's great. And I just want to say, um, thank you so much for everything you've done with your program. I also have a child who attends. And he loves it. He loves doing his homework there, like actually just loves doing his homework there, which is just really great. So whatever magic you're doing there, thank you. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. The quality of the program is wonderful. Similarly, I have a son who, who goes and loves it. Doesn't want to come.
Thank you.
And thank you for your patience. Like Gina said earlier, thank you for sitting through our meeting.
We understand. We're, we're in the education and education world too. So we know, we know how it goes, especially when mandates shift and change. And we're all working within the, the COVID world now, right?
Madam, Madam Chair. When this uh, topic is complete, I would like um. If our guest could stay and uh, join us with the summer program dialogue because it does uh, impact them.
Okay. We can um, you know, move forward through new business then. Um, was there anything else that you wanted to discuss?
Paul, thank you. I'll stop the screen share. So that should.
And then if you want to um, just make me the host again whenever you can.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Parentazi, then uh, you know, going along a new business, if you want to discuss the summer program now while they're on the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What we've done, uh, and I want to thank uh, Ms. Stevens and Mr. Andrews for their collaboration on this. And of course, Mr. Phillips. We have combined uh, our summer program and coordinated it with an Island Roots uh, program. So that it looks something like this. July eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth. Island Roots will do a summer camp from eight thirty till two thirty and then have an extended period of time for parents. Who um, as we discussed previously, need to work and need to have a place for their children so that they can work. From July eighteenth to August twelfth, uh, the Johnson Elementary School will run an academic uh, summer school. Uh, our program will go from eight thirty to eleven thirty with two workshops per day. Um, Monday through Thursday. Um, Island Roots will supervise lunch at eleven thirty, then camp from twelve, uh, twelve fifteen to two thirty. And then again, an extended camp from two thirty to five thirty. So in, in this way, we are giving parents of an opportunity to uh. Through the collaboration between our school district and Island Roots to have a five weeks of um, programming. Uh, our program, our academic program is going to be free to the parents and guardians. Uh, because we are funding it through the S R money, the federal money. Obviously, um, the Island Roots program will have a fee structure that they determine. That I'm sure uh, they had no idea I was gonna, we were gonna talk about this today. So I'm sure they're, they weren't ready to talk about their fee structure for the summer. Uh, this is hot off the press. But uh, I think it's good to get it out there and for people to know. Uh, we will be pu- uh, posting our internal position soon. And uh, I wanted to uh, give the school committee a um, a quick snapshot of the program. Uh, Mr. Andrews, what did I either misstate or miss?
I think you got it all right there. Um, yeah, yeah.
I should buy a lottery ticket.
One uh, detail that was different from last year was that we're looking to have. Our four week program available to all students. Whereas last summer, we had two weeks for one group of students, um, age group and a two weeks for another age group. Um, of course, this is all contingent on uh, signups and, um, but we think that our partnership with. Island Roots will encourage parents to take advantage of the programming that Johnson School offers. And then um, add on um, as needed, the Island Roots piece.
So when you say um, the summer school two weeks, that's not just something that's accessible to children who are um, eligible for extended school year. That would be an option for student, any student to enroll in.
Uh, four weeks.
Absolutely. It's so, it's wide open.
Oh, I think I misunderstood. How, there's, there's four weeks of camp, but two of them are funded by the S R funding as a summer school? No, I misunderstood that.
We are going to have four weeks of eight thirty to eleven thirty academic uh, support for students, academic activities. Divided into two workshops per day. Those are open to all students.
Okay.
Within that group, we will obviously have our special education students who have extended a year on their I U P.
Okay. Um, are these announcements going to go out to the community somewhat soon?
Somewhat soon.
Yeah, I mean, not tomorrow, but in the next couple of weeks or a month or so.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
That's great.
I'm sorry. We're trying to get on the same calendar as the um, as camps are. And I under- we understand that parents are looking at camp now.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's kind of crazy how early they open in my opinion, but a lot of the camps were full like last month.
We actually just went live with our camp registration for two other camp locations today. So um, this is kind of the, the season for that. And we're working on a tight timeline to, to get things ready so that we can share it with the community. Um, and I'll add that one of the pieces of our fee based program is that there will be, of course, it'll be open to the public. But we will offer a specific discount for Nahant residents because we are, we will be in Nahant. And we think that it's valuable to be, to offer that to the community as well.
So that sounds like we're sending the first word out on Friday in the newsletter, Mr. Andrews.
And to anyone who's paying attention right now.
Yeah, right. Um, yeah, I mean, I think the, the camp last summer was great and the people that attended, you know, really enjoyed it. But the biggest feedback is that, you know, lots of families had already committed to other camps. So the fact that you're getting this out. You know, in February or March even is really awesome. So thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions for Ellen Roots while they're on the call? Um, you're welcome to stay, but also thank you for staying with us as long as you have.
We appreciate your time. Thank you. I'm actually gonna head out. I'm gonna go do bedtime at my house. But thank you very much.
Um, well, why don't we finish up uh, new business then? Uh, Mr. Parentazi, do you want to go through that? And W R A testing results?
Uh, certainly. Um, in your packet labeled the eight B, you have the top water sample results for our school for. It was, the sample was taken on September eighth and once again, we passed with flying colors.
Then you had an update on the town meeting?
Yeah, I just wanted to get this on your calendar that the annual town meeting this year will be on May twenty first. I have nothing to say about it at this time. Um, we did get our um, annual report in and I did send that to all of you. Uh, tech, uh, electronically.
And the school budget will be on the agenda for the town meeting?
Yes, the school budget will be buried in the massive fifteen million, million dollar budget of the town. And um, as usual, the townspeople will spend ten minutes on fifteen million dollars and hours on. On the other stuff.
Um, and then the twenty twenty two special education determination?
Yeah, this is really good news. Uh, members of the school committee have a lot to be proud of, uh, in terms of our district. Uh, under the uh, S, S, I D E A, the Individuals with Disabilities Act. The special education determination and it's called part B is made on a regular basis. We submit uh, data. They look at data from our student results, from MCAS, from uh, complaints by parents. By uh, number of um, uh, hearings there are at the state level. Uh, they talk to uh, third party providers about uh, what's going on in our district. And there are four categories. You can meet requirements. That's as good as you get. You can't exceed. You just meet them. You need assistance. That's not very good. Need intervention. That's really not very good. Or you need substantial intervention. Uh, every year since I've been here, we have met requirements, but that's not the good news this year. They graded us on twenty quality points and we got twenty out of twenty. So we got a hundred percent. So uh, this is the result of our special education leaders, of Mr. Andrews, our general education staff. Our specialists who provide special education services, our students, their parents. This is really a whole team. And um, it's really good news. And um, we've been doing well. We've had a lot of audits and. Um, things going on this, this year and uh, they, they've all been really good. And I wanted you to know that.
Great news.
Those small feet, you two. Way to go.
So we'll move back to the superintendent's report. Um, would you like to give a facility update?
I really don't, but I will. The day, the day after I, the day after I told you how good the building was, we had a, a pipe burst. But it's been repaired. Uh, kids were in school. They didn't even know it was going on. Um, we had a uh. A gly- glycol leak, uh, and it came through the ceiling. We've, it's been totally repaired. Uh, and we're in good shape again. Um, everything has been working okay in all this, uh, for example, this morning in the frigid weather. But of course, as soon as you mentioned how everything is okay, right? It's like uh, it's like the Parentazi's law. Uh, then there is no uh, update on the cafeteria fans. I had intended for there to be one for you, a second bid, but it never came in. So I apologize.
Mr. Andrews. Are you ready to give the principal's report? Oh, you're muted.
That's perfect. Don't change anything.
And there we go. How's that?
Great.
All right.
Not as good. I bet.
Well, I have a, a brief, brief report to share with you tonight. Uh, we celebrated the one hundredth day of school this past week. Uh, last week in fact, uh, students making many different projects, uh, recognizing their accomplishment of, of getting this far in the school year. And understanding what one hundred means. I also wanted to let you know that we are working on a science fair with students in grades three to six. This was an idea that was brought to us by the Nahant Education Foundation. And we are working with the P V D Essex Museum on it as well. And the theme will be a climate change challenge with students at each grade level. Tackling a different aspect of climate change, looking at how we can reduce our impact on the earth. Through the food we eat, through where we live and how we transport, transport ourselves. And so each grade level will have a different theme within the idea of climate change. We'll be presenting it at an event uh, in May. At the, at East Point with the Nahant Arts Association. And we're also hoping to be invited to the P V D Essex Museum to also share our program there. And this is in conjunction with uh, an exhibit that the P V D Essex Museum is doing on climate change. As Superintendent Parentazi mentioned, we're looking at a music curriculum. And I've uh, found one that I think would really suit us well. It's for grades K to six. And it'll. And it'll support teachers that are teaching music. Uh, it's a real joyous program. It fits in with the, uh, instruments that we have at the school. And I think it'll make, uh, the work that our music teacher does, uh, a lot easier uh, as they learn how to teach music, but already have something in place that they can use, uh, to do that. I want to let you know that the pre-K and K open house went well. It did have to be online again, looking at the number of parents that were going to be involved. Um, but we had a nice turnout. We had over twenty families participate. Uh, we shared information about our curriculum, aspects of the school. It was for kindergarten and preschool parents. Uh, and I wanted to let you know that we're looking at, um, a census that'll show fifty students potential for preschool in the fall. So there's a large number of preschoolers currently living in Nahant. That will be eligible for preschool in the fall. And we're looking at a potential of twenty kindergarten students eligible for kindergarten in the fall. Already sixteen of those students are enrolled in our preschool. Uh, and so tho- those are the numbers that we're looking at, uh, for this coming season. Probably, you know, looking to capture probably thirty plus preschoolers in the fall. And I would say sixteen to eighteen kindergarteners in the fall.
Along those lines, is there, um, a maximum number of, not that I think that we're going to have, you know, fifty students enroll, but is that what you see as the maximum number in the, in the thirties and the early thirties?
Um, based on previous enrollment and how many parents choose to, you know, raise their children at home until age five. Um, I'm guessing that would be around thirty, thirty-five students. Uh, currently we have, um, sixteen plus twenty-two enrolled. So currently we have thirty-eight students. Yep, in, in preschool.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah, we have, um, two, if you, if you add up all the different days, you know, for one class and the other. So, um, we have, you know, we, we do have quite a few students enrolled in the preschool. Uh, both classes are at capacity given the COVID nineteen restrictions. Um, but I just let everybody know that we also are well staffed with, uh, two certified teachers leading the program. And also two certified teachers supporting the program as parents. Uh, in terms of upcoming events, uh, the student council is having a raffle. And so you might hear your students asking to send money into school, uh, for raffle baskets that they've helped create. Uh, they really enjoy, you know, being part of this, making it, making it part of their own work. Half of the funds raised will go to the A L S Foundation in memory of a parent who we recently lost, I believe. And, um, I believe that's why that group was selected as a foundation to receive that donation. And the remaining proceeds will go to support events at the school. And those, that information concludes my report. Thank you for the time.
I just have a question. When you were talking about the P V D Essex Museum, um, and the hope to have, you know, the, um, information um, or the project that's done through the science, uh, project shared there. Would that be a field trip or just something that's on, um, display?
So, um, I'm proposing a field trip to the exhibit, um, for, you know, in this, you know, this is, um, you know, early days still, we're just talking about getting our masks off tonight. So, um, I would like to see us take a field trip to, uh, this exhibit, uh, which will, which would support the science fair. But in terms of the exhibits themselves, um, I was in touch with the curator of the Art and Nature Center um, at the P V D Essex Museum, and she was open to the idea of including the students um, as, as part of the exhibit at the school.
Oh, that's so great.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was happen chance that it just, we had the idea of a science fair. We said, hey, what's a, what's a hot topic? Climate change. They're doing something on climate change. And actually Wes Sam Bruce is going to be involved in it again. Um, and so, um, he'll be involved with the P V D Essex this, this, um, spring. And, um, so it's another opportunity to work with him and the, um, and the museum.
Thank you for pursuing this, this like ongoing collaboration, this recurrent collaboration with such amazing organizations and talents is just such a fabulous experience for the kids.
Yeah, everybody involved. This is exciting for everybody to have these types of, um, you know, side projects.
Um, huge shout out for this and the create, just the sheer, and I alluded to this before, but the sheer creativity that you have stewarded on the part of the teachers, you know, at, in these like just extraordinary times. I, um, I, my wife took me to, um, P V D Essex for my birthday and I saw, uh, Wes Sam Bruce's art. We actually bought a print. Um, it was really beautiful and happy. And then, um, this week around Valentine's Day, I just wanted to shout that out. It was really heartwarming. Um, what people pulled off and Gina's daughter and is with my son in kindergarten and I'm going to shout out Miss, um, Malanson making these little, these individual drawings that are so right for the kids and these little adjectives. My son came home just, uh, just thrilled, you know, uh, about this and wanting to wear this and having his picture on it, I think had special meaning in the, in the land of masks, you know, with the age of mask wearing. So I just, I was really touched. I really, really, I thought it was just beautiful. So thank you for all you're doing.
Oh, it's, it's wonderful to work with great, great teachers, great educators, great staff. Really, uh, it's a, it's a real honor.
Um, Kevin, I made you host, not realizing that I didn't need to make you host. So whenever you get around to it, if you want.
Sorry, I didn't have a, uh.
That was, that was my, that was.
High show for you.
And we already had, uh, you know, community correspondence, so we can move on to personnel matters.
Madam Chair, the only thing I think was worthy of your, uh, time this evening is that our team chair, Kathy Durlin, has, uh, began working for us on February eighth. Until, uh, for the foreseeable future, uh, Linda and Kathy will be working together as Linda shows her the ropes. Uh, Linda's been our team chair. I believe she's been here for eleven years, if I'm not mistaken. So, uh, she has a lot of history to, uh, distribute, uh, to Kathy. Uh, but it's going well and, uh, nobody's quit this week. So, oh no, damn, I did it again. It's.
Um, and then the last order of business is business from the community, uh, committee. We did discuss, uh, in-person meetings already. Um, I just want to mention that we do have one, uh, open position for the school committee, um, on the ballot. Well, technically two open positions. One for the, uh, fulfillment, one more year, and then a three-year term on the ballot. So, uh, you know, drum up some conversation and see if we can recruit another person to join us. And just a reminder that the nomination papers would be due on March seventh. Is that right?
Yes.
The due date. So just to keep that in mind.
Um, I just, I had one thing that I was, um, would like to add for, to the agenda for next time. Um, I recently went to in-person, um, the charting, the course, um, presentation from the Massachusetts Association of School Committee. And I really learned a lot. And, uh, one of the things that they had discussed was um, the goal of the school committee, which is to, uh, focus on student achievement. And I would like to, uh, talk about that at our next meeting and, and look at how we're doing that in, in school committee.
We can definitely add that under new business.
Great, great point, Michelle. Thanks for the reminder. Not only do I have to go get my papers about running, but I also need to sign up for that training. Or people aren't going to want to have me here from not doing the business. So I'll do the business.
It was good. I, I enjoyed it. I'm a nerd. I love to learn and learn so much. And I was like, oh my gosh, what the heck am I doing? So I really, you know, absorbed the information that they have and, you know, would like to discuss some different things to, um, improve.
Great. I could, I could bring something about data that we, a workshop we went to about, um, how to, how to access our data and a free tool we're going to have.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think I would be, I, I'd be interested in your interpretation, um, uh, Kevin, about the, um, what's online in terms of the achievement juxtaposed to like the overview of the last couple of years, even though we were able to stay in school, which is great. Um, and also like what trends you're seeing now in terms of achievement that you wouldn't see on the Gussi website.
I, I'll jot those down. Thank you.
Other business from the committee? If there is no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn to executive session. I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to re-convene an open session. Um, for the purpose of conducting strategy session in preparation for negotiations with union personnel and non-union personnel. Um, at nine twenty-nine P M.
I'll second the motion made by Ms. Sherlock.
All in favor? All right. Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Hi folks.